Yes, sir. Board Chair Steven Scraper here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
Deborah Hood.
Here.
Bobby Welch.
Here.
We have five present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'll make a motion and adopt the agenda as is, just being a special call meeting, we can't make any changes to it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no? All right, we're going to start with audience communications first this evening. Our expectation is that the communications between the audience and the board remain civil, remain respectful. We're going to a lot, I believe, three minutes per person, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, again, we just want to keep everyone on the same page here with what our expectation is. If for some reason someone's not able to follow those, that request, then we will ask them to leave. Do we have, has Teresa?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Lockett.
Good evening, thank you so much, just, just for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Lockett, and I would like to speak in favor of returning school to in-person instruction. And let me, let me briefly say why I feel that. I want to read, first of all, a quote from the Director of the CDC. It says that keeping schools closed in the coming academic year is a greater risk to children's health than re- than reopening them even amid the COVID-19 pandemic. This is from, from Robert Redfield, the Director of the CDC. I couldn't agree more. I believe that, that this is something that, for our children, we have to do. Our kids have been at home cooped up since March. And I can personally testify, having two kids sitting at home since March, that it is vital that they get back into the classroom. To, to me, this is not an, an issue of should we, it's we should. It's we absolutely should. And I speak for many, many, many parents tonight that could not be here or that chose not to come and say the exact same thing. Our county, as you sent out a survey that said, would you rather return to in-person or online? Eighty-seven percent, if I'm correct, said they want to return to in-person. And, and I would say, I would go a step further as well and say that our high schoolers need to be in-person more than just two days a week. Two days a week doesn't cut it. Two days a week, our children are sitting at home dealing now with issues such as depression, such as they've got to be around their peers. In-person learning is exactly where it ought to be. I'll close with this, I know my time is short. As of today, Jessamyn County has 300 active cases of COVID. Our population is over 55,000 people in this county. That's about a half a percent in Jessamyn County that are dealing with COVID. I think it's vital, with those small numbers, and not to minimize those, but it is vital that our children, including our high schoolers, get back into the classroom five days a week, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett. Next, we have Hillary Armstrong.
Thank you for allowing us to come here and speak and, on behalf of our children. And I can't reemphasize what Mr. Lockett said any more than the statistics that he presented and the facts that he presented. I spent four hours Friday watching the hearing with the three doctors, specifically the Director of the CDC. And him speaking towards the national recommendation, and he was, you could feel his passion for kids returning to school. And as long as the safety guidelines are in place, I'm failing to understand why kids can't return to school in-person and receive instruction the way it was meant to be. I have a kindergartner that's going into first grade that has special needs as well, and he has some speech delays. And he receives his special education and speech and OT at school. And we tried for two months in March and April to do, you know, virtual learning. And I work in the therapy field and understand the struggle of doing virtual therapy services. So, that does not work, in my opinion, from experience on both ends of the spectrum. So, kids should undoubtedly return to school for, for those reasons, especially the kids that are receiving services. And considering the fact that there's only, you know, 300 positive cases in, in the county, I, I don't understand why there wouldn't be an option for in-person, for in-person classes. So, I just want to voice my strong opinion to return to school for the kids in-person, and obviously, you know, the option for virtual. So, I thank you for the time and hope you all consider what we have to say as parents. Thank you.
A couple of quick notes here, one thing I forgot to mention at the outset, we have asked everyone to keep masks on as they move through the public space. I've invited board members to remove their masks, as we've tried to keep some distance between us to make communication a little bit easier amongst us. I'm going to go ahead and excuse Mr. Lockett and Ms. Armstrong so that we can bring the next couple of people in that'll be speaking this evening. Thank you all both for coming in.
Thank you.
Ms. Robert Smith.
Thank you. So I see my name, I'm not going to give you my address for lots of reasons, okay, it's on the form. But I, what I want to do right now is reiterate what Matt said as far as the numbers go. But I want to read into the record a letter written by a local pediatrician, actually, my children attend this, Pediatric Adolescents and Associates. She says it much better than I could, and she has the degree to say it. I have the degree to fight with you on the rules. She has the degree to tell you about the science. So, I'd like to read this into the record because I think it says things very specifically. She wrote this in specific to Woodford County, but Woodford County is, one, our neighbor, and two, not unlike our school system here. So, I would like you to consider that. If I make reference to Woodford County, it's because she does in her letter who she directed this to. She notes, piece of it, "I also implore you to consider the other toll this virus is having on our community. In my professional and personal opinion, that toll is and will continue to be much greater than the morbidity and mortality we are seeing from a virus that is causing very mild disease or completely asymptomatic disease in children, young adults, and persons in the 30 to 50 age range. I will let you know my general observations. As a pediatrician at a large pediatric practice in Lexington, we are seeing two to 300 kids come through our office with their parents in any given day. We are constantly exposed. We treat every well or sick child as if they essentially have the virus, and some indeed have ended up testing positive. We wear our PVE and use appropriate social distancing. We wash our hands, we keep our distance from other staff members. We have to be aware of our exposures and limit our out-of-work activities knowing that we must also protect our friends and family that are vulnerable. We have stayed well with no cases or outbreaks in our clinics in the past five months. No one has had to miss work due to this virus. I truly believe reentry can be done safely and smartly. Our practice has done it, daycares have done it, sports clubs in our own community have done it, and I'll note, your court system here in Jessamyn County has done it. I am not saying that a virus has had, that has had a body count of over 150,000 people nationwide at this point is not serious. We need to remain vigilant and treat the virus with the reverence it deserves. But to continue to push an in-person, but to continue to push off in-person learning because we are not following the data and are just too scared to try does not make logical sense to me. What is the end point? The virus is not going away anytime soon. How low must our cases be to let us go back to school? No one seems to have a good answer for this question. The better question is, what is the real toll this virus is having in our community and on our children? What I have been seeing more of is depression and anxiety in teens and middle schoolers. Do not pretend that high schoolers will not be hired or forced to watch our younger elementary and middle school-aged kids when some parents have no options appropriate for childcare. It happened plenty in the spring. I cannot fault parents who do this when they have little to no options, but this puts an unnecessary stress on our older kids who need to be doing their own learning and have also lost their biggest support system and ability to cope, sports, coaches, teachers, other social activities. I worry about the impact of our, in our children's physical health. Our state is always leading the way in basketball, bourbon, and unfortunately, childhood obesity. The number of kids that have come in lately with parents joking about the COVID weight everyone has gained has been staggering. I am a parent, and I know it can be much easier on days you are exhausted or working from home yourself to turn to screen time. It is easy to keep kids inside and away from physical activity when you are worried about them catching a virus and giving it to their elderly grandparents. Kids being unsupervised on social media and stumbling into sites we are not, we know are not kosher for them will be a reality. This also increases their risk of exposure to child predators, my specialty. I always encourage parents to be sitting next to and supervising their children during screen time. This cannot happen if no one is capable of supervising them due to both parents or caregivers or working. For some reason, the only physical activity they get weekly is their designated PE class at school or other school sports. Also, since they are not stay-at-home orders, online learning will honestly do little to continue or slow the spread, as most will get their work done quicker than in regular in-person school days and be out often with their friends, family, and respective sports. At least at school, we can try to regulate wearing hand wa- face masks, hand washing, and cleaning. I see many people on social media talking about forming in-home pods of 10 to 15 kids so that the parents can work. This will, of course, not be regulated. There will be no strict temperature checks, no hand washing, no masks being worn, or appropriate social distancing. Community spreading is much higher than we realize, and all the pediatric data I have collected shows kids will most likely get this virus from a daycare school or sports who follow guidelines. Most are getting it from their household contacts who, of course, are not masking or distancing in their own homes. Kids have, in many studies, shown to have much less propensity to be able to pass the virus to others in general. I say this, and she goes on. One, you're not stopping anything, you're not slowing the spread of anything, you're not containing the spread of anything. It's futile. And futility is not why we keep our kids out of school. Two, the kids are suffering. The kids are suffering. They are not, child abuse cases are not getting reported. They're not. The social workers can't even go in the homes right now to see what's going on. They have to do FaceTime interviews to see how these kids are. The Casey's Law cases, the addiction cases, are over the roof. You are not helping your kids, you're not. I can understand you making that choice, that the parents making the choice of virtual versus in-school, I can understand it. But I am telling you, you are hurting the children actively, imposing, hurting children by your choice that you make, that is in your hands, to not have in-person school for these children. And you have no reason to do it because you're not stopping a damn thing. That is my problem. You're not helping them at all.
Thank you, Ms. Robert Smith. What we got here, Catherine? Okay. And go ahead and bring in Ms. Diaz as well. Catherine?
That's me?
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Catherine Fonya.
Before you go in here, sorry, if you want to follow the Jason, I'm just going to remind everyone, just, we're asking everyone, keep it respectful, keep it civil. We're going to put a three-minute time limit on the clock, please. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm not as eloquent as that last speaker, that was pretty amazing, I could echo everything. I am a mother and an educator and a sociologist by education, and my concern is for the children. There's a lot of families in Jessamyn County that struggle with providing nutrition for their children. There's a lot of children that are, have an abusive homes that need to be in these schools. The social development that happens in public school is a significant impact for the rest of their lives. That socialization, that friendships, those interactions with mentors and wise adults, like administrations and teachers and coaches, is what creates good citizens in our county, and that's what we need our children to be. They need to be making friends, they need to be socializing. They need to have responsible adults they can look up to, that they can see. They need in-school learning. The American Association of Pediatrics, the CDC, agrees that the benefits of in-school classes outweighs the risk of COVID. And as a mother and educator, I totally agree. I think that our children need to be in school and we would do a disservice to them. Families that need the online learning, to have that available, I think that's wonderful because there are families that need to take advantage of that, but our whole community doesn't. The rest of our community needs to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I am Cynthia Diaz, and I am a mother of five. Four of my children attend Jessamyn County schools, the other is too young. Schools should open. We took the survey, and the parents overwhelmingly agree that they need to open. And they, we had a great plan in Jessamyn County where we could opt out and go on virtual learning if necessary, and if we had children that were put at risk by going. But a European study shows that children are not the supercarriers everyone was afraid they would be, because they are with about everything else, but they lack the enzyme necessary to pass on coronavirus. A German study has stated that the exposure, that adult exposure to children actually helped them and make them less likely to get the virus, being that they pick up everything else the kids spread along and they build immunity to the virus. Seasonal flu, it has more effect, has a higher risk on schoolchildren, four times higher the risk, yet we don't shut down the schools for seasonal flu. The state of Kentucky is number one in child abuse and neglect in the United States. That's sad. The reports to CPS under coronavirus in Kentucky have gone down 30% because teachers are the ones that are sending in those reports. In other states, it's gone down 50 to 60%. And if we don't go back, we're likely to plummet even lower, and we're already competing for that spot, and we need to get rid of that. Dr. Redfield at the CDC said that high school suicide rate has gone up since the shutdowns of coronavirus, as well as death by drugs with high school students involved, gone up. It's not safe for the kids to be at home sitting around online. They need to be out, they need to be socially, socializing with other people their age. Social interaction helps child develop strong language skills, creativity, empathy, communication, and confidence. When they sit at home in front of a computer, they're not building any of that, and they're building anxiety instead. Jessamyn County had a great plan. I was excited, I was, that it came out early, we were getting ahead of things, and we seemed to be doing better than most of the counties surrounding us. And then, all of a sudden, with a few more cases, not deaths, cases, we're now questioning what we'd already decided that was good. But our children have been on house arrest long enough, they've been stuck at home, they need to be out, they need to be amongst friends, they need to be in a better area where they can learn. At school and on virtual, at home, at home, they can do well. Virtual learning, it's not on par. We're behind in mathematics with the world as is, it's, we're only going to suffer more by keeping them home.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll excuse the three of you, please, so we can get the next three in here. Thank you all. Hey, I have no idea. All right. So I'm just reminding everyone, we're just asking everyone to keep this very civil, keep the conversation respectful. We're going to put a three-minute time limit up so that we can make sure everyone gets a chance to speak this evening. Start with Abra Perkins, hope I said that right.
Okay. I don't so much have a question as more of a statement. We're talking about a virus that has a very low death percentage. Under the age of 40 in this state, we've had six. We don't know if they've died from COVID or with COVID. The reports we're seeing are very contradictory. Under the age of 50, we have 21, and under the age of 60, we have 65. Did they have pre-existing health conditions? We're not given all that information. So, given that, those numbers, you are more likely to die in a freak accident by 13%. More likely to die of homicide by 1.3%. More likely to die from flu by 4% or drug overdose by 6%. When you take out long-term health care facilities, we're only at 244 deaths in our state. I feel like we have to be a voice also for the low-income families that may not have the ability to be here tonight, or the means to be here. They can't have a parent quit a job. These kids, what if they have a kindergartner and a third grader that are home by themselves trying to get childcare right now? Childcare centers are closing left and right. I know we, as a family, we have set up a pod of six to eight kids, they're going to be tutoring with some grad students every day in their classes. Number one, because we feel like the school district did not do a good job this spring. I know it was all, everybody was thrown into this. Our county has had NTI, so we are more familiar with this system than a lot of other counties. We had an advantage. Still, it was not an education. My daughter was a freshman last year, she had one class that actually provided schoolwork, one. In fact, their tutors are going to go back over and finish the last modules of a lot of their classes because they were not covered at all, at all. And from what we see, the school is not providing us any picture of what it's going to look like to make a good decision to know if it's going to be better than it was last year or the exact same. So, for our family, setting up those pods of kids not only provides hopefully a better educational experience, but also consistency, which we feel like the school cannot provide them. And I know, you know, so many kids are struggling right now with mental health, being stuck in the house, just not having the ability to socialize like we know they need. I know a lot of people have already touched on it, but child abuse, the numbers being dramatically dropping across the country, we've got to take that into account, too. I mean, four children in the US die every day from child abuse. But in the state, under the age of 40, we've had six. I know the schools typically are the ones that are reporting that. I know it's a hard decision to make, I wouldn't want to be in any of you all's position, but I think there's a lot more to take into account than just the fear of COVID. We have to take into account the facts, what the CDC recommends, and not let it be political. I know I'm out of time.
You're timed, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, everyone, my name is Sarah Johnson. I have a child at West High and two children at West Middle. Millions of essential workers, myself being one of them, have continued on with their daily workdays since March and haven't skipped a beat. We take simple steps in helping to prevent COVID, washing hands, social distancing, wearing a mask, and we've kept working. If it's okay for millions of us to continue doing this, why are the same simple measures not taken to allow our children to return to school and have their lives back to normal or as much as normal as possible? Education is essential. I don't think anyone could have anticipated our country being shut down over this virus. I know the school district and the teachers did their best. I've had great communication with my kids' teachers throughout the school year, and I truly appreciate all their help. However, the level of education that was provided, you can't even compare. I mean, it was, it was embarrassing. School provides more than, than an education. It provides development of social and emotional skills. It provides nutritional needs for many children. It facilitates physical activity. It also provides friendship and a child, and childhood memories that cannot be made sitting behind a screen. Our children need to return to school, my children are begging me to come back to school. We have all taken steps in our personal lives to help stop the spread of the virus, and we can continue to do so when they return to school. Millions of us, again, millions of us that are essential workers have continued going on every single day, wearing masks and social distancing. Our children can do the same. So, please, I'm asking, have our kids come back to school.
Thank you. Ms. Parsons?
When I first heard about the board meeting, I thought, you know, I don't have anything prepared or anything, but I'm a grandparent of three children. My daughter passed away, and I have to provide everything for them. And it's hard making that difference between parent and grandparent in that I don't get to play with them, I don't get to, I have to be the parent. And that being said, is that I'm on board with all of these people that have said they need to go back to school. Anytime that we send our children out into the world, there's a chance that something could happen to them, something horrible. And I'm, I know that firsthand. It's not that we, as parents, care any less for our children or our grandchildren, it's that I, I don't know what the chances are of them getting this virus. But I do know there's a 100% chance of every child being behind mentally, emotionally, socially, physically, and intellectually if they do not return to school. If education was not so important, there wouldn't be so many laws that held parents accountable for ensuring that they get their children to school. And I think it's up to everyone in the community, boards, teachers, parents, to ensure that they have that right to be educated the way they should. And I have a master's degree in criminal justice, but I cannot give my grandchildren the education that they need. Teachers are amazing because they have that skill to see which children need what. And we are supposed to be at home providing things of morals and to teach them to be kind and to teach them manners. That's what our job is. And I feel that it's the education's job to make sure that they are educated and flourish as adults. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and excuse the three of you ladies so we can have the next three in. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to put a three-minute time limit up to keep everyone's comments condensed so that everyone gets to speak. Again, Brendan Christian.
I'm Brendan Christian, oh, sorry. I'm Brendan Christian, a student at East Jessamyn High School. I'm also a type one diabetic, so as a high-risk student, I believe we should still have the choice of in-person school or digital learning. This is for the simple fact that, in my experience, digital learning yields very few, like, actual experience retaining the information. And it's not just me, I've spoken with a lot of other students about this topic, and they just don't get the information in their head from digital learning. And, I mean, if we don't retain the information, what's the point? So I believe we need to have a choice. Thank you.
Got one other form here with no name on it. All right, thank you all. Yeah, let me make sure there's no one else out there, and then we can maybe adjourn for five minutes. Recession, I'm sorry. It's good, good distinction. Bobby said I'm the only one to make a adjournment. Okay. Let's take a quick five-minute recess at six thirty-one, and we'll return. Okay, we'll reconvene now and let Mr. Moore give us his report.
Okay, thank you. I do want to start by just sharing some of our local information. I'd ask that Randy Gooch with the Health Department come and speak to you guys. But before he does speak, just to reiterate, the state of Kentucky right now is identified as a red zone. And then I think everyone is aware of this as well, and the governor, at this point, has made the recommendation that classes not resume to in-person until after August seventeenth. And I don't anticipate that he's going to be making a call on extending that this week, but I have been told that he's likely going to make a recommendation moving forward the following week. So I wanted you guys to know that information from the state level. But again, I'd asked Randy if he could come and share a little bit of information specific to Jessamyn County for this past week. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Matt. I will say, as of today at two o'clock, as some of the folks have mentioned, we've got three hundred positive cases that we've had in Jessamyn County, with seventy-six of those being active. So two hundred and twenty-four have recovered, which is good. And probably the best statistic that we have is no deaths at this point in time. We are currently awaiting a death certificate to see if it's going to be identified as the first death that we have in Jessamyn County. But we've been fortunate so far, and as I iterated the previous meeting, I think our long-term care facilities have done just a tremendous job in making sure that they're protecting those vulnerable populations that we know that are more subject to severe illness and even death in regards to COVID-19. Some of the statistics that I've provided you this evening was based upon where we ended the week as of yesterday, August the second. We had two hundred and ninety-five cases in total. I think that the statistic that is most telling is the fact that over the past three weeks, we've actually had a hundred and fifty-seven new cases, which represents fifty-three percent of the total cases that we've had over the total twenty weeks that we've actually been in this pandemic and had our first case in Jessamyn County. One thing that we, we try to watch is relative to the case rate, which measures the actual cases per one hundred thousand population. So generally, with us having a population of fifty-four thousand, you can pretty much take the cases and double that to look at what that actual case rate is. And what's telling about our case rate is, in the last three weeks, we've actually averaged a case rate of a hundred and four per one hundred thousand in population versus a case rate of sixteen per one hundred thousand population for the first seventeen weeks, which, you know, is identified as about a six hundred and fifty percent increase. Why that's important is that is one of the metrics that the White House Coronavirus Task Force, that's one of the metrics that they utilize to look at the areas that are identified as red zones, that along with positivity rates. And as I mentioned last week, had the opportunity to be at a meeting with the governor and Dr. Burks, actually talking with the governor, Dr. Stack, and some other folks in presence. And she was bringing, basically bringing a warning to the state of Kentucky that said, you know, I'm seeing a lot of the same things that I saw in some of the southern states who were now dealing with high-growth rates and positive cases and positivity rates, just kind of a full warning. And one of those metrics was the fact that Kentucky had went above a hundred case per one hundred thousand population. So that is kind of where Jessamyn County is at now with that particular case rate or positivity rate. The only thing that we have the ability to measure positivity rate with in Jessamyn County is relative to the actual testing that we do with the Jessamyn County Health Department. We don't have the ability to gather all of the data for tests that are done on Jessamyn County residents that may be done by multiple different laboratories that don't have the responsibility for reporting directly to us. But, you know, what we have seen is, over the last three weeks, we have measured about where Kentucky has been with their positivity rate, which to me tells us why we've seen that increased positive case growth in the last three weeks itself. You know, we think that what we're seeing is a response from a lot of the summer activity, the travel, the day camps, the sports activities. We've actually had more growth in our case, in our case rates for ages thirty and under. We've actually, for cases under eighteen, under the age of eighteen, whereas we have thirty-three to date, we actually had eleven of those in the last week. So that's where we're kind of seeing some of those activities, those summertime activities, and the travel and vacationing and things of that nature like that, we expect is causing some of this growth. And, and, you know, we, we really believe that a lot of these summertime activities, travel that is occurring, is what is causing this sudden surge in Jessamyn County. You know, three weeks ago, we looked at our case rate, and, you know, we have a very, very low case rate, and we don't have a lot of concern. But then when you see these surges that relate to fifty-three percent of your cases occurring over the last three weeks, obviously that's cause for concern. Do we expect that we will plateau over the next couple of weeks and see that to start to reduce and go down? We feel like that's what Kentucky's doing, is plateauing right now, the way that the governor had, had spoken about. He's starting to see that positivity rate go down. I think we're seeing that positivity rate go down as we've had, just as we finalized our numbers this evening, probably at five-thirty, we saw a decrease in that positivity rate just for air testing, which is a small measure, of course. But we feel like that so as Kentucky goes, that's the way that we're going with the increase in positive case rates. So, you know, those are the reasons that we would have concern in, you know, looking into the future. But we, we do feel like that we will plateau over the next week or two and hopefully see that reduction in cases once travel starts settling down, once every, you know, every family comes back, gets ready to start school, once some of the summertime activities actually cease and people settle more into the normal family activity. But, you know, those are some of the data metrics and some of the data points that we have occurring in Jessamyn County right now. So as you can see, it is keeping us pretty busy. And, you know, it's very difficult, you know, it, this is, this is one of those issues where none of us have really lived the pandemic and dealt with the pandemic and understand how to respond to the pandemic. And, you know, I know everybody that has the responsibility for making decisions are doing the very best that they possibly can with trying to balance, you know, trying to balance the collateral damage that comes relative to health and the issues of health versus economics and the issues of economics. And unfortunately, when you're looking at your educational system, that, that affects both greatly, you know, and I know that that's very difficult decisions for you all to make. And, you know, certainly, we're, we're glad to have the partnership, I'm glad to be able to provide you the data that we're seeing here in Jessamyn County and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What metrics that you discuss tonight would be the one, the key ones you would look at two, three weeks from now to say Jessamyn County has done its job of new cases?
Yeah. I think, I think probably the main one that we look at is the actual case rate per one hundred thousand, and simply because that is one of the metrics. Because we don't have the ability to truly measure the positivity rate with all of the testing that's done for Jessamyn County, Jessamyn County residents, that case per one hundred thousand is really the only thing that we truly can measure relative to that. And knowing that that is one of the metrics that the National Task Force actually utilizes to identify those states that are seeing increased positive rates of COVID-19, we can very easily look at that and see where we're at. And from what I've shown you, you know, we've had a huge surge in that actual case rate per population. So if you look at the cases that we disclosed last week with at sixty, that, you know, that would identify as a hundred and twenty cases per one hundred thousand. That would be the metric that we would look at and that we would want to start to see declining, obviously. And that's an easy metric for us to identify. One thing that the State Department for Public Health does is, they look at the actual average daily incidence by county. And Jessamyn County, through last week, we've been identified as one of the counties that's showing accelerated spread. That accelerated spread is identified as ten to twenty-five cases per day. So we're falling within that ten to twenty-five cases per day. On the average, ours is probably seventeen cases per day that we're actually falling in, within that actual metric itself. So when I say cases, that's, that's case rate, seventeen case rate per day. So we're one of twenty-six counties in the state that is actually in the accelerated spread, and then there's about five counties in the state that's in the actual critical category. So I kind of watch that, too, in relationship to what's happening throughout the state with other counties, to see where Jessamyn County falls within that particular metric.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And to give you a little bit of a perspective, if we take that even deeper to the school system, I've been tracking some of that information. And again, we've seen the increase in number of students that have been out in the community that are Jessamyn County school students and then our staff that are working that have tested positive. I can tell you that two weeks ago, we were aware of a total of four employees and students combined, but over the past three weeks, we've had an additional five staff members that have tested positive, and then we've had an additional six students. And when I say staff members, what I'm actually tracking and sharing with you are the number of staff members that, are the staff members that are currently working this summer. We typically employ through the summer about two hundred students, so that gives you an idea of how many of our employees that have been working this summer have tested positive or had to be quarantined at some part of the summer for the services. And again, those numbers are very much in line with what Randy shared, in the sense that we've seen that increase significantly in the past two weeks. And Pat, I don't know if you have anything you would like to add there? Pat's the, our Director of Health Services that has helped us with the contact tracing and putting thing, everything in place that we've needed to for those staff members.
No, that's, that pretty much sums it up. We are getting calls, I'm getting calls almost daily of someone who has tested positive and either a family member or a student, and many of them are not being tested in Jessamyn County. So we are dependent upon parents to let us know. So as, as Randy has alluded to, we don't always have that information available to us.
Pat, do you want to maybe just repeat what Pat said for those watching at home, so that way?
I am getting text messages from people who say they aren't being able to hear well, but, so...
Okay. Pat, would you like to?
I am receiving calls daily, and Matt is also texting me when he's notified of parents that are testing positive, or they've had a family member who's testing positive and they're now placed in quarantine, as well as students that are affected by family members that are testing positive. A lot of these tests are not being performed in Jessamyn County, they're being performed at their pediatrician offices or elsewhere. They're being performed at their pediatrician offices or elsewhere, ERs or urgent treatment centers. So as Randy has alluded in the past, we don't always get that information firsthand. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Um, what would happen in this class if a student, if we resumed, or when we resume, not it, when we resume in-person school and a, a student or a teacher test positive? Can you explain for us the protocol from that point forward for other children in the classroom, for the school as a whole?
Okay. So as you well know, we will have to have seating charts. Children will have to be grouped together. And when we're notified of a positive case, I would automatically make the call to the Health Department. They have contact tracers. So we would provide names of the children or staff or both that the contact tracer thinks there is a good chance that there's been transmission. They will actually assess the situation, make the determination if there has been an exposure. And then the contact tracers would make the contacts and go from there as to what it would be. So it could be a, a seating situation of three or four students, or it could be a pod of ten, like if with our sports teams, because we've tried to hold them to pods of ten, including a coach. So it could be a small number or it could be larger. Okay. We good?
Can you talk a little bit about the pace of the communication that you've received so far when we have had, uh, cases?
We have been very blessed in that most people have called us and told us themselves so that we were aware. If they were not in contact with the Health Department, I would put them in contact with a person there who's designated to handle the contact tracing. And to let me know if they have been placed in quarantine, if they want them to get tested, whatever the case may be, we are advising them to follow what Health Department tells them to do. And then if there's anything I need to know, then their person at the Health Department will call me and let me know if that person is indeed placed in quarantine or if there's something else we need to be addressing as in other people that they have been working with or children they've been around or things like that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to share, um, some challenges that we have. And I think, um, a lot of that has been communicated very well tonight with parents. But I just want to share a little bit of information and then talk to you guys about, uh, some of the steps that we've taken, because I know that, uh, you're eager to hear about some of those. But, uh, just from the safety, well, I feel like we're really talking about four primary different areas. First is, uh, the safety and the wellbeing of our students. Next are, uh, the educational opportunities for our students. Then I think when we're talking about the mental health, we're talking about the social, emotional, learning opportunities. And then, uh, the challenges that, uh, these decisions are having on our families, uh, both, uh, financially and, um, getting their students, uh, connected back to the educational experience. Uh, from the safety perspective, um, that is something that we have been working on all summer long. We've developed protocols, uh, that have been guided by Pat Glass and, um, Michelle Gadberry, and we've had committees that have been, uh, working on that. We, uh, developed the protocols and we actually have, uh, twenty hours of training for our staff when they return. And a lot of that, uh, training is, uh, dedicated to those, uh, safety, uh, protocols. It, it will, uh, include teachers coming into the building, the actions are the staff coming into the building, the actions that they may, uh, must take, um, to students getting on the buses, to entering the building, walking down the hallways, cafeteria procedures, recess procedures and classroom operational procedures. So we have several of those steps that, uh, we've laid out. We've already trained our administration on, on almost all of that and we'll actually be finishing that up tomorrow. And then when our teachers return, all of our staff returns on the seventeenth, I'm sorry, on the twelfth, that's going to be when we will, uh, be dedicating the time, uh, with our sta- staff members, training them and preparing. I want you to, uh, be aware of the safety steps. I don't know if there are any specific questions from the board, but that is something that, um, I want you to know we've, uh, taken very seriously and, and, uh, I feel like we have good plans, uh, as we move forward.
Are subs being included in that training?
Uh, right now, the subs haven't been, uh, and, and, uh, we are actually talking about, well, because we haven't had subs back in the building, but we are going to give them, uh, opportunities to receive the information.
In general, what's the sub situation in our district? I know that's been a concern for...
Right now, uh, we haven't had as much interest as we've had in, uh, previous years, uh, with substitutes, as well as some of our, uh, other classified positions. Uh, so, uh, we are, uh, looking for, uh, additional support in, in several areas right now.
So you're, are you saying, when you say classified, are you saying that we have still have multiple vacancies?
Yes.
For permanent positions in the school district for classified personnel?
Yeah, and I will talk specifically, if you want to know, the areas, uh, with our bus drivers, uh, food service workers, custodians, custodial staff and then some of our paraprofessionals. And that's a higher percentage than we've had in previous years. Okay. Any other questions on the safety? Uh, one of the other areas I mentioned was the, uh, educational component. And, uh, we had, uh, some parents that did, uh, a nice job expressing their concern this evening with, uh, some of their experiences with NTI last year. And just reminding everyone, when that system was designed, it was truly designed for ten days of instruction and it was really focused on...
A sporadic basis.
On a sporadic, yes, on a snow day.
Yeah.
Is typically when they were used. And, uh, with it, uh, being, uh, implemented that way, we really were truly focusing on, uh, things like remedial, uh, uh, instruction as opposed to, uh, having, uh, a system in place that was introducing students to new content. So, uh, the state, uh, a- across the board was caught off guard, uh, with needing to go to a full virtual model, uh, in the March timeframe. And what we found was just like other districts, was that we had to adjust to that very quickly. So what students, uh, received at the beginning of that experience, uh, wasn't nearly as strong as what we had hoped it to, uh, it would be. And we, uh, learned a lot through that time and made, uh, significant adjustments. But again, we identified at the end of the year that there were lots of opportunities to improve in that area. And, uh, when I talked about the committee work that we've been doing this summer, uh, we also had a, uh, committee of, uh, administrators and, uh, teachers that, uh, really completely reworked our, uh, NTI experience. Uh, we felt that that was necessary because there is a probability that some, at some point in the school year, uh, we would have to utilize this. Uh, we also, uh, truly plussed up, uh, our virtual learning experience for the families that are choosing that, uh, for the entire year. We wanted to make sure that we were doing everything that we could to provide them, uh, the best, uh, educational experience possible. And I brought, invited here today a team that has been very instrumental in the, uh, extended NTI instructions. So I've asked them to spend just a couple moments talking about how it's different compared to last year.
Good evening. How are you? Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, um, Matt Cessna is passing out this infographic, um, that depicts our new, um, overhauled system for NTI and digital learning. And, um, also for families at home that are viewing, this is, this infographic and the family handbook is now posted on the family resources, COVID resources page on the website. So if you would like to, um, look at that as we go along, that would be lovely. I'm going to ask our whole group to come up.
I'm Lori Holland. I'm the Director of Elementary Schools.
I'm Karen Grace, math teacher at West Jessman High School.
I'm Brittany Cox. I'm the instructional coach, coach at East Jessman Middle School.
I'm Heather Holland, CRA at Nicholasville Elementary.
And I'm Matt Cessna. I'm the District Digital Learning Coach.
Um, and most importantly, three of us are parents of, um, students in the Jessman County schools system. So, um, we brought that passion with us, um, when we, we entered this work back in May, at the end of May. And I will tell you that, um, Brittany has referred to our spring COVID, um, COVID NTI process as panic teaching, and that's really how it felt, is panic teaching. And so when we went into the design of this new system, um, we considered over, uh, we looked at all the social media feedback from families, we looked at teacher feedback, um, student feedback, except like over five hundred pieces of feedback in order to really look at what were the, what were the opportunities for improvement for the system. Um, and so we came together to really look at creating a system with one goal in mind, that, um, families would be more engaged in the process and that, um, student success would continue to be our goal, but we needed to change the plan to make that happen. And if you look at the center of this infographic, it says, "If the plan doesn't work, change the plan, not the goal." Our goal in the spring, the same as the goal is now, is to ensure student learning success. But we've learned a lot of lessons after the spring. And so this committee has spent over three hundred and sixty hours this summer rebuilding this system, getting family feedback, getting teacher feedback, getting principal feedback. Um, and so we're pretty proud. We're pretty excited about the work, um, that we're about to roll out. Um, we do know that while obviously, you know, in-person learning is, is our goal, if, if that's unsafe, we wanted to build a system, whether it's short-term, whether it's for extended periods of time or whether a classroom goes into quarantine or a grade level goes into quarantine, we wanted to create a system that could respond to all of those, those situations. And so that was a pretty big charge, but this group behind me has done a fabulous job with it. So I'm going to let them talk a little bit about the main things that we focused on with this new system.
One thing that we knew was that if we were going to reach families, we needed to have a concerted way to do that. In the spring, um, our teachers were using means that they'd already been using to reach out to families to communicate in a way that they hadn't had to communicate before. So this time around, if we have to go to an extended digital learning situation, we want, um, our staff to use the same primary form of communication for the ease of family so that they know how they can get information from parents and count on it coming that way. So many of our teachers already use the Remind system, um, so those who are listening may be familiar with that. But our district has committed to purchasing the Remind Suite, which actually opens up even more features for that so that parents can be contacted directly via phone using the contact information that they have in Infinite Campus. So, um, part of our work in our handbook to teachers and to parents is to let them know that that will be the main way that we're communicating on a daily basis, weekly basis, so that they can get the information that they need from teachers about their students. And they can communicate back to teachers using that same format.
And it would be text? It would be through text to their phones, directly sent to the phone?
Yeah. Um, another big step that, um, that we talked about as a committee is how to reach students, um, particularly those without access, um, to, to digital means, um, and connectivity. And so we came back to our technology department and we said, "We have to have a way to reach these students." Um, and so our, our district is committed, um, to one-on-one problem solving with students in the, in the event of an outage, so we're not having to figure out paper copies and how to get them home and how to, how to do all the things that we had to scramble to do in the spring and still missed, um, students. Um, so we're, we're committed to making sure that they had equal access, um, across the board and, uh, kind of nobody's really left behind in that area. Um, we also wanted to streamline tools. One of the big pieces of feedback we got is if you had multiple kids in the district, particularly, um, across, especially across schools, they were using so many different features and one teacher does it this way and another does it this way. So we built very passionately that we streamlined our tools, streamlined our process. Um, we have built in more direct time, um, for contact with teachers, more live instruction, um, a very student throat-focused instruction. It's going to be grade level content, um, versus, I think in the spring, a lot of times we were just kind of grabbing at whatever we could that we thought kids could grab onto at home. Um, this is very much going to be focused on what are the main standards that have to, students have to have to get to the next grade level. Um, and we're, we're going to make every effort, um, to reach those, uh, students that way. And we're going to build in specific support for our special education, our English language learners and our gifted students, um, that also we felt like got kind of left out in the spring. Um, so we, this plan has all of those supports in place with a lot of, um, research-based, um, strategies. And inside of those research-based strategies, we plan to train teachers, um, on this new way of, of teaching if we have to go this route. Thank you. Both Mr. Moore and Dr. Holland alluded earlier to how we honor our families and value their roles in Jessman County when they were speaking about their concerns. So one of our major initiatives is how we can make families more comfortable with an extended digital learning platform. So if you look at our infographic, the first QR code will take you directly to the resource bank on the district page where families can find this infographic as well as any other information we have available at this time about opening schools. The second thing we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page when it came to roles, what they should expect of the teacher, what teachers should expect of families and what should be expected of students. So we are working very hard to have common messaging so that everyone's getting the same message and there's not as much room for misunderstanding. So the second QR code at the bottom of the page is a brief video that explains the different roles that teachers, families and students will play in our learning partnerships. Thank you. So we want to be very consistent and transparent with our expectations for our families and students. And so like we've mentioned, a family handbook has been created and has been posted onto the COVID-19 resources page on our Jessman County website. So families will know what to expect, um, from their students' teachers and how they can get that information from them and how they can reach teachers. Um, one thing that has never really been defined until through this new system is how much time students should be expected to be working on classwork when they're not in the building doing that work. And so the handbooks for families and for teachers will define those limits, um, based on elementary, middle and high school. Um, we also ha- asked our teachers to create office hours. Many of our teachers were truly working around the clock, trying to meet the needs of families, um, to their own detriment at times. And so in that same handbook for families and for our teachers, we wanted to make sure that our teachers knew it was okay to have set office hours clearly posted and communicated to families so that those parents would know the best time to reach out to a teacher. A teacher would also post what a response time would be, when a parent could expect to be, um, gotten back in touch with.
Um, as we all know, technology is not perfect. It's imperfect, but luckily our district is very much ahead of most districts when it comes to technology support. We have in each school a digital learning coach, which I've talked to a lot of my other peers in other districts, and we are definitely far ahead of them in that concern. And also each school has a school technology coordinator to help with actual, uh, device, uh, troubleshooting. So we have the instructional technology support, but also the actual, "Oh, my device just stopped working. I don't know what to do." In addition to that, each, um, uh, student device will have a, uh, email on, as kind of the screensaver that parents and students can use just for immediate support, uh, continuing into this next year. So we are better prepared than we ever have been to help with those troubleshooting needs. And if you look at the bottom here, it says, "Family partnership plus quality education equals every student successful," and that is the goal. So that is the goal we're working toward to make sure that, you know, kids can continue this learning experience. As I was saying, uh, last week in a meeting we had, if this, if the COVID crisis had hit, you know, in the year even two thousand, the, the students wouldn't be able to have us the same learning experience that technology opens up for them. So even in the moments where we might have to go into crisis mode, we can still ensure some learning for our students, which is very important.
Any questions?
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
Getting hung up in my hearing aid here. Um, I just want to make sure that, that we're clarifying that this is the NTI plan, not the Virtual Learning Academy.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason that we chose to use digital...
And the reason that we chose to use digital learning, that's a very good question, is because really, we're expanding on what we've just done with NTI previously, and so, we wanted to say NTI and digital learning, so like extended digital learning would be extended NTI. That's a very good question.
Again, I appreciate all of your guys.
It's obvious you worked hard.
Yes.
All that.
Thank you. And the third committee is the committee that focus on the mental health concerns, and our parents communicated some of the concerns that they had with the children being at home and being disconnected from a lot of the social opportunities. And I think that that's been a big focus of this committee, and then also, on the opposite end of that spectrum, those students that are fearful of coming back to school, because they don't wanna test positive for COVID-19. And then, everything that you could possibly imagine in between those two areas. So, I just wanted you guys to also know that we have a group that has spent the summer working on this social-emotional learning for our students, and whether our students are on the traditional model, are returning to in-person instruction, or part of the Virtual Learning Academy, just want you guys to be aware that they're gonna be receiving very specific instruction in these areas, and that's going to be a big part of our return-to-school plan. And then, as we see our students overall starting to settle in and getting back to what we think of as a typical instructional day, and the behaviors that we're hoping to see with our students sooner than later, then we'll really start focusing on individual students' needs. But I wanted you guys to have that information, and I know that you're gonna share some thoughts as board members, but I did just wanna close before you guys are sharing your thoughts with just a couple comments. And one is that I hope everyone can appreciate that I also place direct in-person instruction above any other instructional model for our students, preschool through 12th grade. I feel like it is very difficult to duplicate the types of services that are provided in a classroom setting. There's just too many opportunities that you can't create in a virtual platform with the in-person instruction. But having said that, I also want you to know that I'm very committed to making sure that we're doing, we're moving on our plans and ensuring to our families, and most importantly, to our students and our staff, that the actions that we're taking are gonna be done safely. And, you know, I've received several emails over the past week and a half on this very topic, and the one that probably was the most powerful to me came from a parent, and she communicated to me that she had two children in Jessamine County schools, and that she had selected the in-person model, but she wanted me to know that she selected the in-person model, because she knew that if I felt like it was unsafe, I would switch all of the Jessamine County students to the extended non-traditional instructional model. So, she just wanted me to understand that families are making decisions because they know that Jessamine County is not going to transition students back to in-person instruction until we feel confident that they're ready for that. So, I just wanted to share that, because I thought that was more in line with my thought process and where my heart is with this particular topic. So, that was what I wanted to communicate, and I think we're on to board members' communications? Unless there are questions of me, I'm sorry.
Well, have you shared your full recommendation?
I was gonna make the recommendation, I can make it now if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I think it would be good to go ahead and maybe share with everyone what, you know, what your existing current recommendation is.
Okay, sure, sure. So, I'd shared with the board, it's been over a month now, a proposal for a return-to-school plan, which was that our students would have an opportunity to receive instruction in-person or virtually, if the parents chose to do so. And then, part of that plan also was, in the event that there were periods of time where it was determined to be unsafe, or that there were concerns with safety, that I would be recommending utilizing extended NTI for a period of time until that concern was no longer there. So, my recommendation to you guys is to approve the model that I shared with you guys, and us to use that starting August 26th. But I do wanna communicate to the board that I do have concerns with our students returning. As it stands right now with Jessamine County's data, and what we're dealing with, and what Randy had communicated with the spike is the specific thing that I have concerns with. And what I am recommending is that you approve the plan that was shared with you, again, a month and a half ago, but I do want you to know that I feel like at this point, I do need to, for at least the first two weeks of school, have everyone participate in the NTI non-instructional, non-traditional instructional model. So, stating that in another way, I do feel like we need to start school on August 26th with no in-person instruction for at least two weeks, and return to in-person instruction as soon as it's safe to do so. And I'm very hopeful in what Randy said, that if we are seeing this trend like other states, hopefully, the two weeks is all we need, and we are able to transition our students back to the in-person instruction.
Any board members with comments?
What is the percentage of parents now that are going to do virtual versus what they were a week ago?
So, I would need to get, I'm gonna send out some information to get families to give us their decisions based on the past two weeks of data, because what I saw was, up until two days before the window was closed, it was 21% of our families were choosing the virtual model. But again, on those last two days, and then there were multiple requests after that, once the window was closed, but we had over 800 families that wanted to then move to the virtual model. So, again, we closed that, but we saw a 10% shift, so 31%. It started at 21 and then shifted to 31 with several other requests from families to do the same, but again, the window was closed.
So, is there a limit to the time that they have to make that decision?
So, we wanna open that window back up, and again, feel like we should, because the Jessamine County data and the heightened concerns that we have from the families, so I do wanna open that up actually this week to give families an opportunity to make the adjustments to their decision if they'd like.
Do you have breakdown of the virtual learning request per grade level or per...?
I do, I have it by school and by grade level, but I don't have that information with me. I apologize, I didn't anticipate that question.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Is it because you don't feel like we have the capabilities to keep our schools safe at this time, regardless of the planning, the staffing, the training? We are not comfortable or confident enough to say we can start school or...
And I appreciate you saying that, because I know I've said this to several people, and two weeks ago, I felt incredibly confident with our plan and our procedures that we have in place. And, you know, we have already been involved in multiple incidents with staff members testing positive, and we were able to implement all of the protocol for contact tracing. But what has me concerned right now is the volume. And what also has me concerned is if we have a very significant volume come in, which the data is telling us that there's a very high probability, then I'm fearful we may start up school for four days, five days, and it'd take us much, much longer to recover from the number of challenges we have with that, with all, you know, with the high number of students that are gonna test positive, and then the contact tracing and things that would occur. So, I feel like if we can get over this pump that Randy had described, and get that number to curve down, then I feel confident that our plan's gonna work.
I have a question. If between now and the 26th, the numbers drastically go down, would this be revisited or will that be canceled?
I don't think, I'm looking at the data as like a single day. What I'm learning from discussions is that we do need a little bit of a trend, so I anticipate that this will give us the trend data that we would need to be able to make that decision. And I do wanna point out, you know, that the governor has identified that, has made the recommendation that schools remain closed till August 17th, and he is gonna give us recommendations moving forward. So, while this is my recommendation, it may also be layered with the recommendation of the governor.
That's right. I don't think that, you know, I mean, he can change that at any time and, you know, basically overrule us.
Yeah.
So, you know, we already planned for well-ahead delay of what he was recommending, and we've known that for a couple weeks, so.
Yeah.
My part for board member communication, I know a lot, most of them have probably left, but, you know, I appreciate the support I see from the community on both sides. We've got probably 50 emails, you know, 50 to 100 text messages, all of us, and we're sharing the good ones and, you know, some of the silly ones. But people aren't taking it serious, and that type of community involvement is, you know, something to lift your spirits in times like this.
Yeah.
So, that's about the only good thing that's come out of this, is to see that people are passionate about, you know, doing what's best for their kids and for the community, so.
And playing off of what you just said, I do think that we are seeing the community doing those things that, you know, the medical profession is saying that we need to. We're seeing more evidence of people coming on board with wearing their mask, as evident in what we saw this evening with making sure they're keeping the social distancing, with following some of those guidelines if they are going on trips, making sure that they are keeping that distance and quarantining for a period of time. So, it's those things that I think are going to help trend that data in the right direction.
You know, Matt, sorry, go ahead, please.
May I go back to your response to Amy's question? And just to clarify, I'm sure it's my hearing, not your speaking, but your concern is that we would start school, and if we had to shut down again, that there'd be more loss, that it would be harder, that would be harder? I kinda got lost in some of that.
Yeah. I think that we will have potentially a lot of challenges with the number of cases that we're gonna have at the beginning of the year to be able to sustain and start off in that positive way that we're hoping for.
Okay.
And that's one of my big concerns frankly, is putting these kids on a yo-yo, where they start school, then they're yanked out, then they possibly go back, and then they get yanked out again if there's another outbreak. And I hear what Matt's saying, and I hear what Randy's saying about, basically, we want the best possible climate to do this in. And right now, the way the numbers have been going, it's not that. And so, maybe, we've got, what, about a three-week lead time before the school year starts, and an additional two weeks, you know, about five weeks where we could kinda cool off a little bit, get dried out, and hopefully, two weeks in, which would be, what, about September the 9th, maybe?
Yes, September 9th.
If everything holds and our numbers improve, I feel like it would give our kids that do return to in-person instruction a better chance of staying in in-person instruction. I can't imagine how hard it's gonna be on families and kids if they're going in, coming out, going in, coming out, and constantly transitioning between the two, because we can't get this under control. I do wanna add, you know, I really appreciate the superintendent's due diligence on this and his team. You guys have been great, you've worked really hard on this. And I also commend the other board members. You know, we all may have disagreements on what we think is the best solution, perfect solution, but I know that each one of them has put a lot of time into studying this, have talked to stakeholders, they've done great. You know, you all really try to inform your decisions, and I think that's to be commended for each of you, so. So, you know, I'm hopeful that it's a two-week window. I think we all are, you know, I share in all those parents' concerns that want their kids back in class. I've got a dual role here as a board member and a parent, and I want my kids back in class, too. So, I definitely think we've gotta do everything we can to get them back in the classroom, and make sure that when they go back in the classroom, they stay in the classroom. I think, you know, our number one goal is to provide a safe environment for our kids to learn in, and the number two goal is to provide a quality education for them, and you can't provide a quality education if the environment's not safe. And to me, that rings really true with what we're talking about here tonight, is to make sure these kids do get back as quickly as possible to end class instruction, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
I may have misunderstood. So, currently, we have nine staff and eight students? Am I just wrong?
Yep. We have, and you correct me if you'd like, but we have seven staff members that have tested positive, and then we have one that's actually quarantined because her husband has tested positive.
So, we have eight students?
Yes.
So, August the 12th, regardless of what our vote is this evening, the teachers and the staff will be returning?
Yes.
With the training that they're supposed to have?
Yes. And like I said, we have, it's 20 hours of training expectations that are really getting our staff prepared for the NTI model that you heard about this evening, covering all of the social-emotional expectations, the training there, and then all of the safety protocol. We're also utilizing that time for our adults first to practice all of these procedures and protocol, and then they've gotta really start spending time in their individual classrooms, setting them up so that they can meet these safety expectations.
Realistically, whether it be August the 26th or September the 9th, whatever decision we make this evening is subject to change according to numbers. Correct?
Sorry, I don't wanna speak for you, Matt, but yeah, I mean, it's, if things get worse, if our numbers, if our positivity rate gets, goes higher, if our case rate keeps going up, it's gonna make it obviously really difficult to bring kids back in the classroom, and I think that's...
Okay, so we do two weeks NTI, and then that turns into three, and then we go back in the classroom, and then they're gonna get acclimated to that, to those rules. So, we're five weeks in, and the kids still don't have a...
Well, I don't wanna jump ahead and assume there would be three weeks. I mean, again, I know what you mean, and I think, and I think the hope is that five weeks from today, our numbers are moving in the right direction, and it makes Matt and his team feel better about sending the kids back into the classroom, and the idea that we can manage what we're expecting to happen a little bit better versus sending them back in in a hailstorm and expecting them to not get wet, so to speak. That's, and sorry, I didn't mean to answer for...
And, you know, if you look at the data, it's probably the worst data that, if you look at the whole, what part are we talking, 22 weeks of data? The data that were the last three weeks are the most negative of all of the data, so...
Randy, what was the number you gave us? 53% of our cases have been in the last, have been in the last 30 weeks out of the 20?
So, yeah, I anticipate, just like the trends that we've seen in other states, and what the governor is, has suggested, we may be starting is to see that plateau, and I think that changes our scenario. And I think that changes our scenario completely.
So here's another question. If the, if they go back August the 12th and they start the 26th, so they've got two weeks of training and the kids come back? So if they go back August the 12th and then we have those two weeks that we don't do anything, who's to say all these families, all these kids may not take a big vacation? And then that's going to affect our number too, but I mean, just talk it out loud.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. And, and.
To me, hope's not a method, you can't, hope's not a method for success, so.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, our teachers will be here providing the instruction because they, they will be doing instruction from their classrooms, working with, working with our families. So I don't.
But we can't speak for what families?
Right, yeah, and.
Listen, if there's, speaking strictly for myself here, if there's one thing we do hope, I don't mean to use that as a strategy, but is, we hope that the message coming out of this is as a community, we're rallying together and uniting together to get these kids back in the class.
And to wear our masks.
And to wear our masks, to physically distance, to, you know, it, it's.
To pick safe vacation spots.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's, there's a lot that the community, I think, can do to help us and, you know, sharing in this decision-making, so to speak, to make these kids get back in the classroom. Because again, I don't, you know, I don't think anyone in here is saying we prefer virtual. You know, I know, I know I want mine back in the classroom, so.
I do want to ask Ms. Pat, we should, we should ask her earlier, I'm sorry. How are we going to utilize the health clinic as far as the year goes?
Earrings and masks don't double.
No, they really don't. The health clinic has already contacted me wanting to know they're ready to go once we actually start back with in-person. So they're, and we're trying to expand them into a couple more schools this year. So I think they are, they're on board, they're just ready to start whenever the students come back, okay?
Do we have the space?
Yes, yeah, we've worked those pieces out.
Will that be done by the time kids actually come up to school?
Yes, yeah, we've already identified the spaces in the schools.
I did have concern, I think we have one particular school that's overcrowded, more so than the others. And I know they had some concerns about, and I think obviously it was trying to keep their students, staff, and their teachers safe and distanced. If they don't have the space, they don't have the space. So we need to find the space. So if, if that means, you know, for a, you know, a short period of time, we need to get trailers or something else maybe?
And which school?
West Middle.
West Middle?
And I.
She didn't want to be on the record?
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm concerned with now, just for the dynamics of their, you know, population and their.
Yeah.
That's a good point, Amy.
Yeah, and, and you know, that, that is part of our district facility plan and that is one of our next steps. But I also think that when we're talking about those that have signed up for the Virtual Learning Academy, that's going to reduce their student population. You know, if I, if we look at our district level, it's 31%.
31% of what, 800 kids?
Yeah, so, so you are talking a pretty significant reduction initially, but, but I know that's just the immediate response, talking about the virtual, students enrolled in the Virtual Learning Academy. But that is one of our very next steps for renovation projects in Jessman County schools.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
So that's almost 2,500 kids that are choosing to go for it, is that correct?
The 31%, 31% of 8,600 students.
That's a little bit more than that.
Yeah.
I have some comments to make, if this is an appropriate time.
Please.
I, I want to say that for all of us, it's been a busy week. Last week was for me anyhow, I can't speak for anybody else, but was what I call new news. And it shouldn't have been, I was, been in the woods camping the better part of the last month. But I was aware that Jessman County's rates were undeniably high, undeniably horrible. And, and yet it was still new news for me and, and I, I left here a little, just shook up about the concept, the thought that here we are again in this state of what I feel like is a horrible crisis. Most of my career, if you don't know, I worked in Jessman County for 32 years and then have remained connected to public education since then. And I have always gravitated towards the children. I'm trying to be very kind here with my words, but the children who struggle the most, I guess, maybe. And even my first seven years as a PE teacher, I gravitated towards those kids in the locker room who didn't want to change clothes till everybody else had left. And so that, that's kind of been my heart since I got into education. And I am in great distress over the families I know by name and the ones that I have been talking to who aren't for sure how they're going to handle this crisis. And yet at the same time, they're scared to death to send their kids to school. So it's a terrible dilemma for them, it's a terrible dilemma for us and for our community. And I would just implore our community to act with, with higher values than we've ever conceived of before. That families are not just creating pods for their, their group, but they are looking around the community for children who don't have a group, who don't have a pod. That we are thinking about kids that didn't sign on to Zoom meetings in the spring. I'm very grateful for a Wilmore teacher who noticed that my niece, who was living with me at the time, hadn't signed on to one Zoom meeting and she called me, emailed me one night about midnight and set up a private Zoom meeting with my niece. That's the kind of extraordinary efforts we need from everybody in our community. If our community doesn't go along with our desire to get kids back in school, then I don't know how, Mr. Gooch, our, our numbers are going to decrease. So this is a community effort, I guess, is my message tonight. And as much as I, I really did appreciate all of the parents, I've answered 67 emails and as I said here, I think I've received four more. I appreciate the letter that I, that was written to pediatrician, I believe that pediatrician's name was Dr. Eddings. I've seen it on several different places. And I appreciate all of her thoughts and her concerns. But as a former teacher and principal, I have to say that school teachers aren't set up to act like healthcare professionals. There's not a pediatrician that has 20 patients at a time. There's, you know, healthcare professionals, I have a son who's a first responder and a daughter-in-law who's a nurse, they are trained thoroughly from the beginning of their careers in safety protocols. And that's not the typical training for teachers, none of our teachers have had pandemic 101. And so we, it is not the same to say that because the healthcare system has managed, that the school system can manage equally well. And, and everything else she said, I, I concur with. But I just have to speak up on behalf of teachers and say, it is not the same. And until you've lived that reality, you can't imagine the fear it strikes in teachers' hearts to think that they're going to have to act like healthcare professionals now along with being educators. So I don't really have anything else to say, except that I, I really hope that our teachers are checking. If, if we vote tonight to delay in-person school, I hope that every child, we make sure that every child has a device. If a parent doesn't come pick it up, I hope somebody takes it. I'd be happy to volunteer to do that. But we just have to make sure that, and I can't believe I'm saying these words, but we have to make sure no child is left behind in this pandemic because it's really going to be easy to do.
Very well said. Anybody else?
So is our motion going to be to modify the existing plan for a two-week delay? Is that going to be our motion? Does that work?
Matt, correct me, I'm wrong. I think it's, it's to have the same plan remain in effect, but with the first two weeks of school utilizing extended. Yeah, 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 but I think that's, that's kind of the, yeah, delaying in-person instruction for two weeks. At least two weeks, I should say, I don't want to make that statement in concrete and give a false sense of hope in case a month from now, we're worse off as a community and, and these same concerns still exist. But, short answer made long by me, yes. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on his instructional model for the start of the 2021 school year.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so I, I do still, and I've talked to the board members about this. And I think we all understand, but I just want to reiterate it that I still have that obligation as the superintendent. And you guys have appointed me with that responsibility to manage and make sure that I'm providing the safest instruction for our students. So I do want you guys to know that I still feel in my heart of hearts that we do need to have the two weeks of non-traditional instruction for our students. So I guess I would like to recommend that you guys approve the plan that was in place in the absence of the two, two additional weeks or more. But just appreciating the fact that I still need to put that in place.
I feel like that, you know, you continue to do your due diligence and if numbers change, if, there's a lot of variables in this and I'm sure we will support that. But I feel like that if, you know, our, our community, our teachers, our administration at each school has very good resources that they can, you know, that they're expected to use and our families and students are expected, they have expectations as well. So if some, some near future happens where one of those lines fail, I mean, there's got to be different, you know, direction and instruction, how we go about it. But I feel like that we have three weeks to go ahead and implement this, let parents get plans in place for their kids, for their childcare, for whatever, you know, their particular family needs. And we need to remember and do the best we can and do, you know, diligently and focus on being things back.
Well, as I said too, I think that the numbers are going to say what happens. And if the numbers skyrocket, we won't be doing August the 26th, probably the governor may shut us down, we don't know. It's unknown territory for all of us. And we just, we have to make the decision based from our hearts, our heads, our parents, our own personal feelings about things. And this has been the hardest, I've been on the board for eight years, this has been the hardest decision I've ever had to make. And I've tried to look at it from all walks of life. And I feel like putting parents off two more weeks just is going to create a lot of nervousness, a lot of questions. So I think we just need a plan that we had and we need to just stand behind that plan.
I think the best thing throughout this decision to possibly restrict that first two weeks to virtual learning is allowing other parents to come in and say, hey, I want virtual learning, or no, I don't. And opening that up, windows, you know, more. And that might suffice, you know, some issue over here that was not really recognized. But now that we have more kids doing virtual learning than we don't have as many in class. And so I think it's, it's going to be a learning curve for everybody. You know, but our goal, I mean, our purpose here, our whole responsibility is to educate our kids. And the best way we know how, and you know, it's not going to take one person, it's not going to take one staff member, it's not going to take, it's going to take us all. So if we need to step it up, that's what we need to do. If we need to buy certain resources at one school and not at the other, or a different set of resources, that's what we'll do. We'll just, you know, you can present whatever, you know, we need this at this school, get it to them. To make it happen because we need our kids back in school.
All right, Mr. Welch?
All right, motion adjourned.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no? All right, 7:45.